Good evening. And welcome to our president's town hall meeting for the Borough of Yaden, April 27, 2023, at seven o'clock PM. First, just want to welcome all of our residents and friends to this town hall meeting. As I promised a few months back, that I would be coming to you quarterly to give you updates and to keep you informed as to what is going on in our town. That is, of course, relating to all of the needs of our community and what our town government is doing for you. I want to focus on the positives tonight. I know there's plenty of room to talk about the negatives. I think it's even more important for us to inform you of some very important and significant achievements in our past 16 months that we have been in leadership for the Borough of Yaden. Many of you are aware that when you have elected officials, their first charge is to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And even at our very basic local level of public service, we are charged to do the business of the town. That means paying our bills. That means contracting professionals to keep our administration in proper order. It also means that both individually and collectively, we should keep our commitments to you who elected us to represent your interest. So we're going to kind of focus a little bit on that tonight as we also focus on specific achievements that have marked our administration here to fore. I'm really excited to thank Brian at Waytech, who set up our Zoom tonight, and I want to give special kudos to my daughter Megan, who helps me understand the technology of Zooms and how to navigate in this particular medium. I want to thank also residents that have posed questions that we will give some attempt to answer. And for those that we can't answer, we're going to invite you to attend our workshop meeting, which will happen next Monday, the Borough Council Standard Legislative Non-Voting Workshop Meeting at seven o'clock, second floor of the Borough Hall, so that we will be able to address any specific questions that we may not have answers to here tonight. So I want to just get started with that and looking forward to. Okay, just a moment. Okay, here we are. Okay, focusing on the positives. I read, I heard a caption recently on one of the major news television outlets. I believe it was MSNBC or one of those. The gentleman said that if we do not recognize and understand our past, we're destined to repeat it. And so I want to kind of use that as a jumping off point to talk a little bit about the history of Yaden and why it's important that our community, as a suburban community of Philadelphia, is to be preserved, the integrity and dignity of our community and legacy of our community to preserve. Yaden Borough was incorporated in 1893. That's over 150 years ago. And you'll see on our presentation tonight that it was very cruel. The people that incorporated this borough did not have our complexion, but they had a determination and a dedication to establishing a rule of law, a rule of legislative codes that would govern our community, both then and now. Need I not say or speak very much about what has happened in the past 16 months in our community and particularly on our council, where we have had embarrassing, to say the least, discord that seems to be no end. And I don't want to ignore that 800-pound elephant in the room on this Zoom tonight. I want to also remind you that in with roughly two weeks from now, we're going to have an election. We have elections every two years. And that is the time for you to exercise your vote to determine what type of government you want to see flourish in our community. And so I'm encouraging you, not endorsing anyone at all, but I'm encouraging you to let your voice be heard by supporting candidates that will represent your interest in the way that you desire them to represent it. So enough for that. I want to talk a little bit about how Yaden is special to me. We have gone through, as an African American, of African American descent, that over the past 200 years, we were not able to represent outside of the Reconstruction Period, which was replaced by Jim Crow law. But we did not have the opportunity to sit and govern and to represent not just African Americans, but anyone else until now. And we now have full access to represent the interests of an entire community. And we should conduct ourselves in a decent and respectful way when we're doing that. So we stand on the shoulders of many, many, many that gave their lives for us to vote, let alone set in a legislative capacity. We have our state representative Joanna McClinton, who has now been promoted as the first black female Speaker of the House in our state legislature. So need I not say we stand on the shoulders of many that have gone on before us? And we should, with dignity, respect the gifts that they have given and given their lives for. I want to talk a little bit about the fact that Yaden, as a suburban community, our population is governed by, the borough population is orchestrated and governed by the number of people that live here. For boroughs, you have roughly 10,000 people that constitute a borough. If you compare the Borough of Yaden as a suburban community to Philadelphia, Philadelphia has over a million and a half residents in the city, qualifies as a city. And so in our community, we have the opportunity to develop programs for our seniors. We have the opportunity to develop programs for our youth. We have opportunity to keep our streets clean on a smaller level. We have opportunity to repair our infrastructure. We have an opportunity to balance our budgets, which we have done repeatedly since I've been on this council over the past 20 years in my total service, 16 years of my total service to the Borough of Yaden. And so I bring these matters before you tonight because in order to understand where we're going, it's important to take a quick reflection of where we have come from. Yaden is noted as the home of Flag Day, where with the presidential acknowledgement and resolution was established for us here in the Borough of Yaden. So our claim to fame as a small borough that had the impact of creating recognition and honor of our flag, which Mr. Kerr, William Kerr, led the charge over nearly 100 years ago. So I want to just take a special note of those accomplishments. We now celebrate Flag Day once a year, and it is recognized generally on June 14. However, this year, excuse me, May 14, but this year it will be celebrated. Make sure I get that right. I have to call on Councilor Vice President Lauren Johnson. I think she gave me the date of June 14. So don't quote me there, but we'll make sure that, we'll make sure. June 10. So June 10th will be our celebration for Flag Day this year. I want to move on a little bit with our. Okay. With our borough updates. That is really the meat and potatoes of this town hall today. As you are aware, in January, we inducted a new police chief for the Borough of Yaden. By way of updates, he has, as you probably have already recognized, our police department has heightened morale. They are working, they are working together with the new chief. The new chief has made great inroads with the staff. He is very approachable, very supportive of when situations like abandoned cars or what have you are reported to him, he immediately addresses those requests and those situations. We're also in the process of renovating our police department. There's new cameras, there's new audio visual that was lacking in the prior years. Those upgrades are happening as we speak. We also have a very enthusiastic program that our new police chief is initiating. He is recommending that our officers go through a certification program. And that is, that's heightened for them in terms of their careers and for us in terms of their ability to deliver the type of public safety and protection. I want to just give kudos to our mayor, who is working very closely with this new police chief and assisting him in all the things that he has in view. He has made some recommendations over the past 30 or 40 days of how to recruit new police officers. He gave us a presentation last month that noted how we have to kind of increase our salary, starting points and suggestions on how to make recommendations to perhaps fund the police training in order to attract more officers. That training cost approximately $6,000. And so if, in fact, one of our strategies for attracting new officers that aren't already working in a different city or a different location, but for new people who are entering the police academy, that we could offer some incentives and then also have some contractual relationship for them to work for us at least two years or something like that in order to attract officers. Need I not say that we would love to make sure that our police officer selections in this recruitment effort and process should reflect the community that they will serve in. So we have a very robust, diverse community we would like for our police officers that are selected to reflect the community in that same diversity. So we've communicated that, and the Chief of Police, of course, has said that he certainly would make that a priority as well. Our policy and procedural manual for our police department that grew out of our efficiency study that was completed last year is also being implemented with the new chief getting adjusted to his roles and recommendations as well. So we're merging the information. We want the Yaden Borough Police Department to be one of the best police departments in all of Delaware County. That is the goal that we were shooting for last year when we approved the efficiency study. And of course, that is being, that is being brought to fruition here now. Also. Our financials. I think I've got to go back one, excuse me, just one minute. Okay. Our financial updates. I was looking forward to some budget information from our finance director, Mr. Nichols, but apparently he did not get that information over to me in time for this presentation to you tonight. As you're well aware, from last year, we had a budget surplus, or actually a budget contribution from our Rappa funds, which were the county stimulus recovery funds that came from Washington to our county, to us. That was in the amount of $1.1 million. Those funds had certain qualifying factors. Some were used for our emergency first responders out of last year, also for any overtime for our officers that worked. If we had to offset some budgetary matters with that, the funds were for that. And then, of course, we could also earmark funds and for repairing or doing some other repairs, say, for seniors or for persons in their homes or their facade or their homes, that their funds could be put in the form of grants to support that. So Mr. Nichols will be attending our workshop meeting, and he will have a full presentation, fill in some of the blanks and that I'm not able to fill in for you right now. We also, I want to make special note of the grants over the past 16 months that have been applied for and approved for the Borough of Yaden in excess of $5 million. And that is chiefly due to our engineer, the Piani Group. They are phenomenal. They have an incredible track record on the Eastern Seaboard. They don't just operate in Pennsylvania, but in other states as well. But they have met the deadlines for applying for grants for our infrastructure and for recreational use. So we are very much committed to creating and allocating earmarked funds for a recreation or community center here for Yaden. We, as all of you know, most of you know, that we do not have a facility where our families can gather, where our children, where our elderly can gather, seniors can gather. And it has been talked about over the past 20 years. We used to have a theater that was a landmark in Yaden. That theater was torn down. Apparently, there was a fire years ago. And there's a vacant lot there, right on Church Lane. And so we are very much committed, and we need your support and the support of like-minded individuals, residents of this town, to take leadership and commit to working together in your interest to produce a recreation center, to build additional housing for tax revenue. There is so much potential in our town to preserve the integrity of our community and legacy of our community. So I just want to put a pin there because it is possible, if we can imagine it, if we can envision it, it can happen. But we need cooperation on our council in order to get these types of projects done. So we have those earmarked funds. I want to report to you, as Mr. Nichols had shared with me earlier this week, that not only do we have the stimulus funds, the $1.1 million, but for the first quarter, our tax revenue receipts were in excess of $800,000. And so our budget is solid, our economics are solid for our town, and it can only get better. But in order for that to happen, we need a collective group on Yaden Borough Council that's going to have the same vision and the same energy and the same commitment to deliver to you these projects in a completed fashion. Now I want to go to our Yaden Borough upcoming events. Of course, Yaden Borough elections, local elections, are May 16. Many of you will be receiving information. We've had a couple of forums. We've had endorsement meetings for candidates in our town. But you will make the decision, the final decision, as to who will represent your interest in the Borough of Yaden. So that's on May 16. Our Flag Day is cited for June 10, 2023. We also have a Borough-wide cleanup day that's going to be May 20. I was just given this information recently by our Recreation Department Chair, Councilor Lauren Johnson. She's also noting that, which is an idea that she had many, many years ago, of planting perennials on May 20, the same day, in recognition and remembrance of someone, a loved one that you want to commemorate and share that memory. So that's also on May 20. I've mentioned to you that our next Borough Council workshop meeting is May 1st at seven o'clock PM. We will also have a special meeting at five o'clock in order to pay our bills. I need not note that at our last meeting, we had councilors who walked out, and we weren't able to facilitate the process of approving our accounts payable list and our cash balance reports. So that being the case, we have had to call another meeting in order to pay our vendors. And that is unfortunate. And vendors and people are relying upon this borough as a government to, after they have rendered services to us, that we can't pay them because councilors walk out. And so just want to make a note of that. And we will have that meeting on the 5th, and we will get our vendors and contractors paid. For more information, you can see us, Yaden Borough, www.yadenborough.com for more information. And now I want to address a couple of the questions. I've kind of moved through this, through this agenda pretty quickly. So we may not be here till eight o'clock. But I want to address a couple of questions. There was one question with regards to a carjacking. I have not been informed or briefed on a carjacking at Church Lane and. Okay, excuse me, one second. Just one second. Church Lane and Baltimore Pike, or Church Lane and Baltimore Pike, I'm not sure that's on our on our side of the boundary there. That may very well be Upper Darby or East Lansdowne, but I'm not aware of it. I will inquire of our police chief, though, for you. And feel free to call your mayor. The mayor has a responsibility over our police department, and he is reported to by our chief. Our Chief of Police reports directly to the mayor. So that will be, and the mayor is accessible. If you leave a number SMS and M communication on his phone, if his queue is full, you certainly can leave a message in the borough with the Borough Secretary for him as well. But I would pose a question to him. Please address the lawsuits. In our last town hall, we have been given very, very specific instructions not to talk about the litigation publicly until those cases are resolved. As many of you know, the impetus of these meetings, of these of these lawsuits did not begin in 2022. They came out of situations that occurred in 2021 and before. You may know the history or know the events that took place prior to that these lawsuits being filed against the Borough of Yaden. With regards to the former police chief, that contract was not renewed based upon the losses in a FOP grievance, the new council taking, being sworn in on January 3, 2022. Those losses occurred in 2021 and 2020. So those losses that our decision or the new council's decision was based upon actions and activities or what have you, events that occurred in 2020 and 2021. So the lawsuits that came as a result of not having a chief of police during a large part of 2022 left us in a very vulnerable position. Our police, uh part-time police officers were all discharged, so we did not have proper coverage uh to uh respond to the public safety needs of our community. Uh in addition to that, uh we had to do a nationwide search for a new police, new police chief and to have our uh efficiency study so that our police department would run in a in a more um in a better way. And so we made the decisions to do that uh with your support and with uh the um consensus of the of the of the majority of council. And so we now have those matters resolved. The lawsuits, however, that were filed uh are being uh litigated uh by our insurance company lawyers. Uh the Borough of Yaden has um ten million dollars of coverage. We pay an average of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for that coverage. Uh the contractor for the Borough of Yaden, uh the Larkin Group have been protecting this town for the past thirty years. And so they are the ones that give us direction. And they have pretty much said we can't talk about any specific detail or settlement or any of that uh until those final negotiations are completed. Uh but it does not cost, other than what we're already paying, it does not cost us any additional uh cost related to that. That is, uh that is my understanding. And um and 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 we're not unlike any other municipality that has uh insurance coverage. Now, I will say to you that that insurance that not only covers lawsuits and litigation, but it also covers our unemployment insurance, our pension insurance, what all of those categories. Uh um that that insurance policy is a blanket uh over all of our, any potential liability uh to our town. And that is standard. Uh so I hope I've answered that as as close as I can without um violating, you know, any uh any restriction on what we can do. Lawyer fees, lawyer fees for Restore. Um if I may digress a moment, I I can say this about um the situation with our zoning hearing board. Our zoning hearing board, which you will note that all of them have resigned from our zoning hearing uh board because they were sued individually as well as collectively against the borough. And people that volunteer their time to serve this community in the capacity of a zoning hearing officer, it's unfair for them to have to with with go this type of pressure. And I'm very sorry that that they felt the need to resign and protect their families. Uh we are asking people now, uh as you can see on our advertisement uh at the borough and on our electronic advertisement and on our website, that we're looking for people to uh replace those persons uh on the zoning hearing board. The the question was uh the lawyer fees spent to date. Uh I don't have the number for our special counsel, who was Mr. Ewald. I don't have the the ex- exact amount. I don't have any amount for that matter because I wasn't prepared to answer that question now, but you can certainly get that answer uh at our workshop meeting. Our finance director will be there and he can answer it for you. Mr. Ewald is a very proficient lawyer who has special experience, years of experience dealing with zoning issues and um did a fantastic job for us in representing our interests. The newest or the latest um development with Restore is going to be this May. We have another hearing in May that Mr. Ewald will be um prepared to um settle whatever that situation is going to be there uh and report back to us. So we are uh, you know, we have had the best and you want the best and the brightest when you are being sued. Rightly or unrightly, you need the best and brightest attorneys, most capable attorneys to represent the interests of this borough in a professional way. And that's what Mr. Mr. Ewald has provided for us here to fore. Um let's see, another question here. I mentioned, I answered the question about uh the lawsuits of what they have caused. They have not cost the borough directly any cash, any money at all uh that is done through our insurance coverage, uh attorney fees, et cetera. Uh and uh okay, I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. I would very, very much uh invite, pack the house out. Invite all of you that are listening or have opportunity to come out to our workshop meetings and to our council meetings. Fill the house. Because when you do that, you can see firsthand what the challenges are to conduct the business of the borough as legislatures. Uh that is so, so, so important. When, yeah, I know that many of you that have come out to the Borough Council meetings and I've met many of you when I've circulated petitions to be your committee person for my particular uh precinct, the eighth. When I've met you and stood and and sat in your homes and talked to you, uh many of you have said, what in the world is going on up there? Why is there such uh discord? Why is there such disrespect? Why is there such disruption? But you elect the people that sit there. So when you come, you can demand order. You can demand respect, not just for the process, but respect for the house. Anyone coming to your home and creates a ruckus, they won't be there very long. And so that has to be the approach. As I talked early about the historical uh uh capacity of of our town. Uh people that started this town did not start it with a lot. And there's always disagreement. Let me just pause here. There's going to be disagreement. There's going to be misunderstanding. But it is the way you resolve conflict, the way that you listen, the way that you respond, that you don't have to use your your position to plow through or plow against anyone. There's room. Someone asked me the question, uh do you have executive sessions? We have executive se- sessions for every council meeting. It is standard protocol. Do people come to the executive meetings? Some counselors do not. Some of them do. But that information that is that is discussed in an executive session is designed, is confidential because it deals with legal issues, it deals with personnel issues. It and we are prohibited by the Borough Code not to discuss those things in public. And it has other, so we got personnel, real estate and and legal issues. All of that gets shared. Not only that, each counselor is supplied with over a hundred documents every month that they need to review before coming to a meeting and to discuss it in executive or discuss it on the floor. So the 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 conjecture that we don't know what's going on and we have to stand up at screen uh is is unjustified. And so I'm I'm, you know, I implore you, come out and hold not only this coming Monday, but all the next Mondays for the rest of this year. Please come out and on third Thursday and take control of your town. Take control of your town and the administration of your town. That is your responsibility as much as it is mine. People have asked me, how do you sit there calm with all of the acrimony? Because I understand my job is to do the business of this town. That is what the Borough Code prescribes. You are an elected official, you have to legislate. You have to pay the bills. You have to address issues. You have to exercise decorum. You have to exercise civility. You must do that. No matter what is going on, you must maintain your composure. And that, any legislator that has read the Borough Code will conduct themselves accordingly. And when they don't do that, you want to know for what reason is the resistance so strong and so disrupted? You want to know. And it is, the honor is upon you to come and say, hey, I voted for you. Please show some respect here. Now, and that's, I mean, I didn't know I was going to go to get on that train, uh but maybe it was necessary. Ah. I'm supposed to focus only on the positive. And uh so I guess I'll close out with uh this statement. I'm a Christian woman and I'm on uh unapologetic about that. And hopefully, my life will reflect that in the way I conduct myself and in the way that I relate to you and relate to others. So do unto others, very classic scripture, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Treat people the way you want to be treated. Respect people the way you want to be respected. And that lays the that establishes the platform that you can operate on. And so that would be my um positive statement as we close out. Uh look forward to seeing you. Whatever we didn't get to talk about today uh on this town hall, we want to uh end it on a really strong note. We want to break ground on a re- recreation center before the end of this year. Uh we can look at, we have several million dollars that can be earmarked, uh not the whole five million uh that could be earmarked for a recreation center. It may be necessary to uh do some bond financing to actually get that building completed. Uh we need your input. We need uh your uh input on what type of center you want and what type of center we can deliver. Uh and Mr. Dotson, who is our borough manager, has formulated a survey that he has the counselors reviewing at this time. And once we give some feedback to him, that survey will go out to you. And you will have an opportunity to um respond to the survey uh telling us what what are some of the amenities that you want to see. I think if we can just get small wins, we can graduate to bigger wins for our community. If we can go from re uh staffing our zoning um board to putting these lawsuits behind us and moving forward, moving our town forward, uh preserving the dignity of our town as a suburban community that's highly desired, that people want to live here and continue to live here. Uh so we want to make that, make that pivot and make it happen because it is as close uh as our breath. It is as close in terms of imagination as our sight and as our breath. We can make it happen. Working together, we can make it happen. We can deliver for you because you have put your trust and confidence in us. And uh and looking forward to doing that. Okay, is that it? Okay, I think we can close out. Um look to see you on Monday, seven o'clock, second floor, Borough Hall. Come out and um and give us your support, bring your questions. Our finance director will be making a presentation, line item, what our actual budget is and what our year-to-date expenditures are and what our total balances are. So look forward to getting that report from Mr. Nichols. And um we'll see you on Monday. Take care, God bless. Have a good evening.